Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that said, you know, I have a recommendation. Are you all in agreement to the recommendation?
You talking about the one that's here?
Yes, sir.
Does that number equate to the 130?
Well, basically, I said, you know, conditional approval pending that they meet the well spacing and it is for a reduced authorization of 2.448 million gallons.
Good. So is there any exceptions being asked for, or is it just?
Not at this time. Now, they're... they could, I guess.
But as of right now, the everything that they're going to reduce GPMs to get into the... to meet our spacing requirements?
Yes, sir. If they accept it.
On this map, I have a question, Mr. President. This map shows...
All right, can you use your mic so James can hear?
I'm sorry. At least on the map we're looking at right now on the screen, where the 10% line goes across the CCM boundary, is that all on the south and southwest side where it exceeds the boundary? Is that all still within the Shady Meadows boundary, or is that outside of that too?
Kathy, can you hear me on the phone here or do I need to use my mic?
They can hear you.
Okay. Yes, so the... just sort of, we need to double check the CCM boundaries as well. Peter has those mapped a little bit more than we do, and he said that the... our map is outdated on our... you know, what was it pulled out from the PC, and so, or whoever's the originator of those CCM lines. And so, we need to double check that, but I think your question Brian is, you know, is that the only place where it's outside that boundary? And I believe that's correct. Is that the question?
Yes, the down on the southwest corner where the... where it says proposed well and has lat longs, there's four large lots that that is all...
The... the... in the southwest corner where the text is that says the proposed well and the lat long, that is all outside of the CCM boundary.
I know it's all outside of the Oakley Farm boundary. Is it in the Shady Meadows boundary or is it outside?
No, no, it just touches the edge of the Shady Meadows boundary.
Okay.
Is that big enough?
Is this... is this Shady Meadows here?
No, that's Oakley Farm. Shady Meadows should be down to the hand to the left.
Down here?
No.
Yeah, we need to go a little spot.
Down here?
No, up right. Right there where it says TD 790 and those lots.
But so this one is...
This is not...
That's not at either one of them.
That's not at either one of them. All that down there.
Okay, so, I mean, well, that's clearly outside. But we didn't file an exception for the spacing rigs, would we have filed one?
No, I don't think they had time to file. I mean, it wasn't until Friday that they were able to run the well spacing again.
Yeah, we never discussed filing an exception. We're more than happy to file an exception if you want to require that, so.
Well, it's not a matter of what we want, it's a matter of what the rules require.
Yeah.
And so, I guess board, my comments would be, I guess it depends on how much you're comfortable leaving uncertain with a conditional approval. I think you do have the latitude if you want to say, you know, will approve it subject to the general manager determining before final approval that complies with all the spacing rigs. It can be ratcheted down accordingly as necessary, and perhaps getting, you know, after this thing's drilled, getting water quality samples that they're going to take anyway through the district so we can make sure there's no cross-layer contamination issues. Or you could just continue this for a month, because they might have to file out a spacing exception request if they're not comfortable with maximum capacity that they're going to have to ratchet it down to to make it comply with the rules. I think you can go with it.
So what does it do for you guys if we delay this till the next meeting?
I don't know. It's more of a contractual...
You want to get the mic?
Oh, sorry. So the timeline of this well is, it's already not forbidden to drillers. And Aqua has certain financial terms that they have to meet with their corporate office, so delaying this a month would pretty much put them at a disadvantage to having it done for their completion date of next year at the end of September. So it is a fairly large well. There's going to be quite a bit of clearing to happen to the trees in order to get the rig in there. So, I mean, it probably won't be detrimental, but it will put the squeeze on the driller to get it done in the timeline in the contract.
The reason I'm asking the question, I'm very uncomfortable as one member of the board voting yes to approve this just because of the questions that we have, but I certainly don't want to create an undue hardship on you if we can avoid it. So I would be much more comfortable if you guys felt that you could, you know, settle with us another 30 days till we can get these issues resolved.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that said, you know, I have a recommendation. Are y'all in agreement to the recommendation?
You talking about the ones here?
Yes, sir.
Does that number equate to the 130?
Well, basically, I said, you know, conditional approval pending that they meet the well spacing and it is for a reduced authorization of 2.448 million gallons.
Good.
So is there any exceptions being asked for, or is it just?
Not at this time. Now, they're...
Okay.
They could, I guess.
But as of right now, the everything that they're... they're gonna reduce GPMs to get into the...
Mm-hmm.
To meet our spacing requirements?
Yes, sir. If they accept it.
On this map... I have a question, Mr. President. This map shows...
All right, can you use your mic so James can hear?
I'm sorry. At least... at least on the map we're looking at right now on the screen, where the 10 percent line goes across the CCN boundary, is that all on the south and southwest side where it exceeds the boundary? Is that all still within the Shady Meadows boundary, or is that outside of that too? Kathy, can you hear me on the phone here? Don't need to unmute.
They can... they can hear you.
Okay. Yes, so the... Just sort of... we need to double check the CCN boundaries as well. Peter has those mapped a little differently than we do. And he said that the... our map is outdated on our... you know, what was it pulled out from the PC? And so, or whoever's the originator of those CCN lines. And so, we need to double check that. But I think your question, Brian, is, you know, is that the only place where it's outside that boundary? And I believe that's correct. Is that your question?
Yes, the... down on the southwest corner where the... where it says proposed well and has lat longs, there's four large lots that... that is all...
The... the... in the southwest corner where the text is that says the proposed well and the lat long, that is all outside of the CCN boundary.
I... I know it's all outside of the Oakley Farm's boundary. Is it in the Shady Meadows boundary, or is it outside?
No, no, it just touches the edge of the Shady Meadows boundary.
Okay.
Is that big enough?
Is this... is this Shady Meadows here?
Uh, no, that's Oakley Farm. Shady Meadows should be down to your hand to the left.
Down here?
No.
Yeah, we need to go a little spot.
Down here?
No, up right. Right there where it says TD 790 and those lots.
But... so this one is...
This is not.
That's not at either one of them?
That's not at either one of them. All that down there.
Okay, so, I mean, well, that's... that's clearly outside. But we didn't file an exception for the spacing rigs, or what if I won?
No, I don't think they had time to file. I mean, it wasn't till Friday that they were able to run the well spacing again.
Yeah, we never discussed filing an exception. We're more than happy to file an exception if you want to require that.
Well, it's not a matter of what we want, it's a matter of what the rules require.
Yeah.
And so, I guess, board, my comments would be, I guess it depends on how much you're comfortable leaving uncertain with a conditional approval. I think you do have the latitude, if you want, to say, you know, "We'll approve it subject to the general manager determining before final approval that complies with all the spacing rigs." It can be ratcheted down accordingly as necessary. And perhaps getting, you know, after this thing's drilled, getting water quality samples that they're gonna take anyway through the district so we can make sure there's no cross-layer contamination issues. Or you could just continue this for a month and... because they might have to file out a spacing exception request if they're not comfortable with maximum capacity that they're gonna have to ratchet it down to to make it comply with the rules. I think you can go either way.
So what does it do for you guys if we delay this until the next meeting?
I don't know. It's more of a contractual...
You want to get the mic?
Oh, sorry. So the timeline of this well is, it's already not permitted to drillers. And Aqua has certain financial terms that they have to meet with their corporate office. So delaying this a month would pretty much put them at a disadvantage to having it done for their completion date of next year at the end of September. So it is a fairly large well. There's gonna be quite a bit of clearing to happen to the trees in order to get the rig in there. So, um... It probably won't be detrimental, but it will put the... put the squeeze on the driller to get it done in the timeline in contract.
The reason I'm asking the question, I'm very uncomfortable as one member of the board voting yes to approve this just because of the questions that we have. But I certainly do want to create an undue hardship on you if we can avoid it. So I would be much more comfortable if you guys felt that you could, you know, settle this another 30 days till we can get these issues worked out and let the board reconsider. That's just my thought.
Sure. You know, as Brian mentioned, you know, maybe the way to go, and just in my opinion, is conditionally approve it for the lower amount. And if Aqua's comfortable with that lower amount, we'll go ahead and move forward with it. If we're not, then we'll go ahead and file the variances to the rules and we'll meet again next month. So it kind of bats it back into Aqua's court on whether or not they're willing to delay it a little.
Out of curiosity, what's the iron levels in the pluxy right there?
For lack of a better term, it's pumping cannon balls. But concentration, it's well above 0.3.
But you don't have a number?
No, sir, not with me. Aqua has tried several times to rehab the pluxy wells. They've done dry ice, nit... nitrogen, you know, chemicals for... And it's lasted about a week or two and then it goes right back to, like, you know, having iron problems. So they've thrown quite a bit of money at the iron issues on the pluxy wells there, and nothing seems to have helped.
But as far as the calculations are concerned, the... if you take the concentration of the iron in the pluxy and the GPM, and then you have your... your well that you're gonna blend with, and you have a concentration of... a budgeted concentration of iron in that water and a busted GPM, you can get the combined net fluid of what the result would be.
Correct.
So has that been done?
No, we have not performed a blending report yet.
Brian, what does it do if we table this until next meeting? Do we have to go through the legal process and public notice and all this stuff again, or whatever?
We can continue it until next month. I mean, if... if they have to provide notice for a spacing exception, I mean, that's... that takes its own amount of time anyway. So, you know, probably if we can figure out whether they're... this week, whether we'll get to a point where they think they can meet it without having to file a spacing exception request, then it's okay. But if not, then still give them time to get their notice out for a spacing exception request. But we wouldn't have to... we wouldn't have to republish notice for the permit hearing.
But I... just for clarification, did I hear that y'all would be acceptable to a conditional permit if the board authorized it and then let Aqua Texas decide if they want a s... exception?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still got no sound. Does anybody else have it?
Ready for motion? I'd move that we table this until next board meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. If we table this until our next meeting after information is returned, all those in favor say aye. Those in favor against, motion carried. We'll postpone this until next meeting. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Somebody? Second.
Motion made in second. If we adjourn, the public here, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, this meeting is now adjourned at 9:48 a.m. Thank you.
I think unless y'all leave to work on it.
I'll be right there.
Okay.
Okay, now call the... bigger board meeting at 9:29 a.m. to order. Okay.
Director Basada?
Here.
Director Kirk?
Here.
Director Osborne?
Here.
Director Tischler?
Yes.
Director McPherson?
Here.
Director Smith, Director Curtis, we have a call in present.
Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion made in second that we had... bring the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, we're on the administrative financials, Kathy.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. A main on semi... semi-annual letters went out to our water users there in August notifying on timelines to get those pumpage reports in and any groundwater production fees owed. Annette, Kenny has really stepped up and is taking a very active role of being on top of this, keeping a very good list going forth and trying to minimize past dues, but also focus on getting those production reports timely so we have more real-time information as far as pumpage going on. Something very important on the radar, the next 30 days are gonna be very busy for the budget committee. Hunt Worries is not planning to leave town for a while because we need to start meeting and looking at setting our fee rate schedule. Our rules require that we set that 60 days prior to the end of the year. With that comes the new process billing for our permitted users are... you know, restored use permits have not actually been authorized, but, you know, everyone is producing under a temporary authorization. And so the rules require that 45 days prior to the end year that we do provide by regular mail or email to the owner or operator what that amount is going to be, that they will be required to pay, whether it's monthly, semi-quarterly, or quarterly. Semi... it's either monthly, annually, or quarterly now. So we'll be working on that. I think it's gonna be a big adjustment for bookkeeping to get up to speed on getting this out and tracking that. But we've got 90 days before the end of year. We'll get it all worked out somehow. I have faith. So with that, unless someone has some questions on the financial side, I think we'll... that'll conclude my report as far as finances.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to update public activities, educational consultation, if this is anywhere.
Yeah, I'm gonna come up here instead of hiding behind the computer over there and just kind of give you an update on some of the PR and outreach initiatives, events that we've had going on since the previous meeting. Kathy and I met with Grayson Thomas on August 21st. He is the 4H Water Ambassador that's representing Johnson County this year. This is the first year that Johnson County has been involved in the program and had an ambassador. So now we currently have a water ambassador in Ellis County, Hill County, and Johnson County. So we've continued to add an ambassador every single year. So we enjoy getting to visit with him, learn more about him and his interest, why he wanted to become a 4H water ambassador. And he is a very well-spoken, talented young man, and I look forward to working with him over the next year and hopefully retain him as an ambassador. I believe he's a freshman this year, so we have a good amount of time with him over the next few years, and I look forward to what he will accomplish. The virtual Texas Groundwater Summit was at the beginning of this month. I did attend it virtually. I enjoy getting to attend these conferences, whether it be virtual or in person, because some of these topics and items that are discussed at these conferences, I do get asked about. And so I appreciate the ability to stay abreast of some of these ongoing discussions and topics. And it helps me, in turn, apply that to any outreach and education initiatives that I have. Another thing I do want to point out is that a few months ago, I applied for the Leadership Cleburne Program through the Cleburne Chamber of Commerce. And this is a developmental leadership class. It's made up of citizens here in the community who have an interest in leadership roles. And each session actually has a different focus, but the ultimate goal is to give the participants in the class a better perspective on the different businesses and organizations that make up Cleburne. Some of the... I did have the orientation for this class on September 9th. There are several prominent leadership figures within the community that are also involved in this class. So I look forward to building these relationships and also representing the district through this class. We will have a county day, a city day, and also the district is working on sponsoring the state government day that we held in March. So I feel like this is not only a great opportunity for me to strengthen leadership abilities, learn more about the community and the county, but also represent the district and get our name out there. So looking forward to the next year of being involved in that program. I gave a presentation to the NS Rotary Club on September 8th at the NS Community Center. There were about 18 or 20 people there, and we were able to stay socially distanced. But it was really great to be there in person. There's just something about face-to-face interactions that really resonates with me and I feel like with members of the public. So we were able to stay socially distant and still have a really impactful presentation, I believe. Kathy and I also attended a Cleburne Rotary Club meeting on September 11th and gave a presentation there. And again, there were about 20 members there in attendance. So just like the NS program, we were able to stay socially distant, but we are getting back in the community face-to-face. And I'm sure Kathy can attest to this as well. But I've noticed throughout the months, as we've been more involved in the community, whether through the chamber, through events, as we build these connections, people are starting to remember us and we're starting to build this network of people that are kind of connecting us as we continue with these different outreach and education initiatives. A few upcoming events this weekend, the Ellis County Rural Heritage Farm is having a virtual farm heritage day. And they will be featuring a video that I compiled of our water education trailer. So even though we can't be there in person, we're still going to be able to present that information as if I were there in person with the education trailer. We do have the Ovilla Garden Club coming here to our new building on November 19th. And I've started reaching out to teachers that I've previously worked with and listening with them on how can we best fit the needs of everything that's going on in their classroom this year with them, having to be partially virtual or maybe partially virtual in person? And, you know, how we can help them and still provide that educational resource for them. So... and then, as always, I include a little bit about how our digital and social media presence is doing. And as I usually say, we continue to reach more and more people online. So looking forward to things kind of moving back to normal. It's very encouraging to have these in-person events that we had this month, so I'm feeling very optimistic. If there are any questions, I would love to answer them at this time.
The Ovilla Garden Club, are they coming just to get a presentation about the district and learn more about it, or you have a special presentation?
So they are gonna come, and we will cover kind of a general presentation about the district, just kind of... kind of set the stage. But we're also planning to go through the water education trailer. We're gonna talk about some rainwater harvesting. We'll probably plan for some giveaways, probably giving away a rainwater harvesting barrel. This one will kind of be a little more of a special event. We don't... we'll have several hours planned out. We're not in the constraints of just a lunch hour. So this one will be a little more in-depth, I would say. So we're gonna have a little bit more of a all-inclusive presentation, you could say.
If I could, I think they're... they're very interested in the rainwater harvesting and wanting to come see. You know, I think they're all going stir crazy as well, having their little meetings amongst, you know, private settings and looking forward to getting out and seeing some stuff. They knew that we had just constructed a new building with our rainwater harvesting and wanted to come see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Move on to discuss considering taking action to bring a resolution 200004, adopting amendments to the district bylaws, updating the district fiscal address.
Okay, I think that is an old agenda.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't...
That was from the previous month.
Okay.
We're in number seven, right?
That's what we thought. Thank you. I was at this groundwater management area. I'm gonna work on this. Pardon me. Anyway, there really hadn't been any new developments. We're trying to get another meeting set up. There are some other outstanding issues that GMA 8 is trying to do. And it's... we've got... we're trying to reallocate some of our boundaries between us and GMA 6 and then boundaries between GMA 8 and GMA 7. And then we have another with GMA 9. And so we're gonna try to realign all this to where we'll give up a little bit and we'll get a little bit. Just kind of make the lines a little more easy to follow. And the resolutions have been passed. It's just that each GMA has to get out... we have to get together and just... and get it done. And so that's... that's where we're at right now. We should have a meeting, I believe, here in October.
Yes, they sent around a poll trying to find a good date. The district has offered our facility. Typically, the GMA does meet in Cleburne at the Civic Center. And since March, those meetings have been held virtual. So we're not sure if they're gonna be back to in person, but if they do, they're... they're excited about the opportunity to share our meeting space and have those. So I think it'll be a great opportunity and excited that we can do that. But as President Basada said, I do believe the meeting will be sometime in late October.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the right. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, they... we've visited about this before. The Water Development Board has designated the brown water... brackish groundwater production zones. They have a rulemaking on... check the 356 of Water Development Board's rules out right now. The public comment period ends today. We had visited previously about wanting there to be a petition process available to the Water Development Board to amend the boundaries of those brackish zones based on updated information. We talked about that concept with them, and formally, they seem receptive to it. So we'll be submitting comments to the Water Development Board requesting that they include a... a petition process for amending the brackish groundwater production zones. That's it.
Do they have some place on their website as the information, Brian? Where can you get information on this?
Yeah, they have, they have a lot of information on their website on that topic.
So one of the things, region gema recently, and you know, it's become obvious to a lot of groundwater districts that this is just getting on their radar. And so I found it kind of interesting to listen that the region wasn't really aware of it, but the groundwater districts within the planning group were like, you know, we need to start focusing on this. How does this fit into the state water plan and so forth? So I think you're going to see a lot of the regional planning groups a little more involved in making sure this information is going forward.
Can I give you any other questions? I will move on to item number nine, General Manager's Report, Kathy.
Yes, real quickly, several things. And I think Sinclair covered quite a few under hers. But you know, permitting is still very active and busy. We're seeing drilling increase during the month of August. I think there was a total of twenty-five wells that registrations were received. You know, most of these are exempt use wells, but still just a plethora of them happening in Johnson County especially. We do include in the General Manager's Report each year or each month a kind of a summary total of groundwater production year-to-date. What will be very beneficial, once we get the new database along with the change in the reporting, it'll be a little more, what I always refer to as real-time. Given the current rules allow such a thirty to forty-five day lag on reporting, it's hard to have that instant information that's very beneficial to helping our properties manage their groundwater use, but also stay with them to authorize production. Field operation, Rusty and his team have been very busy trying to get all these wells, get around to all wells to verify meters, field reports, so forth. This information is very valuable as we address the administrative completeness on our historic use permit applications to try to determine where we're seeing inaccuracies. And a lot of it is not, you know, purposely mistakes, but just reporting errors, reporting the wrong meters with the wrong well, so forth. So they're doing a lot of magic in a way to kind of help everyone straighten this out. And I think there's days they'd like to go home and pull their hair out because, you know, it is definitely shuffling through shoeboxes of information to coordinate some of this. A lot of meetings going on, you know, with the setup in virtual capabilities. It seems like we're having more and more meetings instead of less and less. And so we spend a lot of time meeting, and I'll be glad for some of that to go away. But as Sinclair mentioned, we did have the Water Ambassador here for, I believe he's Johnson County?
Yes.
And it was really nice to meet him. I was excited to see you so engaged and wanting to do something besides go play video games and sit inside. He seemed very active and interested in natural resources, and I really encourage that. We did have the Drywater Summit virtually. I'll have to admit, I've watched very little of it. We were just swamped at that time with the move, so there was very little time to even focus on logging in. We did officially get moved into the office. Mooters showed up on September the fourth. Our first day here was the day following Labor Day. I think everyone was glad to have a three-day weekend after the packing rush that we did. But I think everything has transitioned fairly well. We're pretty well out of boxes. I'm probably the only one with boxes still in their office. We hope to clean up the last of these little technical issues. The new monitors will be recessed hopefully tomorrow on this. We'll check in to see what our audio technical difficulties are from. It may be something as simple as when they replaced the monitor setup last Friday. They may have turned off something. We had other issues this morning, but thanks to two directors being here earlier, we got the majority of those issues fixed. So we just didn't think to test the other component. TWCA, that's usually in October. They're going to be going virtual this year. If any director is interested in attending, I'd be glad to get them registered. I think the date is included here as October the twenty-first through the twenty-third. I haven't really studied the agenda, but it is online if anyone would like to see. Our enforcement items have diminished greatly. We've been working with, well, we've been permitting and the field staff have been working with a lot of our, our public to resolve some of these issues and get those reporting timings more on spot, you know, helping them go online, set that up, so forth. And unless, someone else has some questions? I think that would be the conclusion of my report. I think we'll talk about some, the one outstanding enforcement item we have here in just a moment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kathy. All right, move on to item number ten.
Could I add a couple of things? I do apologize. You know, I did want to mention that Paul Tischler, Director Tischler, and myself, as well as Brian Sludge and James Beach, did meet with Johnson County Commissioners earlier in the month. They had asked for a presentation on the district, an update on water levels, so forth. And want to discuss a little bit about minimal tract sizes and, and you know, as far as their role as a court looking at platting requirements and what they were seeing as growth move towards Johnson County from Tarrant County, so forth. I think it was a good presentation. And the comments I received following is they were very pleased to have us present and the information was beneficial. And last, you know, one of the things we need to think about is the recognition for Dennis Aronakis. I would like to have a resolution and a plaque either for presentation at our next board meeting or if we do do a small open house with the district, that would be a nice time to do it. I know former General Manager Jim Conkrane has reached out to me. He'd like to be present to attend and has provided me some dates that wouldn't be convenient for him. But I think it would be very respectful if he could be here as well. So, you know, I'd like to hear thoughts. Do y'all want to do it with the next board meeting? Or is there a better time separate from a board meeting that y'all would like to do this?
Do any of his dates fall in line with board meeting?
Let me make sure it's nothing we can't. He cannot be available the twelfth, so that is not a board meeting.
Are we looking at doing an open house?
Well, we thought we would do a small open house, invite like the county commissioners, so forth, but...
I like that.
And then do it at the next board meeting? So I didn't know if y'all would do it, you know, with the board meeting or at the afternoon of the board meeting, maybe?
I thought we were talking the open house.
Yes. Do it the afternoon of the board meeting or at the same?
Have the board meeting in the open house on the same day?
That's the question. Do y'all want to?
Say whatever works best for the management and district employees.
Okay, we'll send out something to see if we can't get that all buttoned up. So we get something out. That'll give us a goal to get all the other little things fixed.
I'd like to give the commissioners and judges, most times they're more freer in the afternoon than they are in the morning.
Right, and I thought it'd give a little more recognition to Dennis to have that presentation with them.
Pretty perfect.
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
So how are we progressing on the, you know, a lot of things changed generally first? With, you know, the permit rules, the payments, the database from HAB. Are we, are we in line for a smooth transition, you think? Is everything falling into place?
Smooth is...
Relative?
Yes, so it is falling into place, but I would definitely not say smooth. So with the first of the year, what changes is people have, those that submitted the historic use permit application, they are required to produce under that temporary authorization. But as far as the reporting and payment, it stayed the same in 2020. So that it's 2021 where that changes, where they go to the new rules on. And I'm looking so forward to that just because of, it really does make it cleaner on this side. But that transition's going to be bumpy. I know it's going to be bumpy. And in, you know, trying to get the bookkeeping set up to, to manage that. Once it's done, it'll be, you know, easy as can be. HAB is still working on the database. They were here a couple of weeks ago, did some test runs with this. We actually sat down with Marty the other day and let him run through some of the test sites on the well registrations. It's good to get someone's outside view on, hey, this just doesn't make sense, you know? We all are real bad and we understand it, we play in it, but you know, we need to make sure the end user is, is comfortable with it. And, and they see things that we don't see. So they're hoping to get it rolled out soon. It will not have the payment, is that right, Michael? The payment component won't be active at first. But we're trying to get the online assessable accessibility just so we can start moving that data over as soon as possible. And I will be reaching out to appraisal districts to get all of these updated CAD information included. That'll be helpful this one. So thanks for that question. I meant to update on HAB already.
There was time, Kathy, I have a few things to say.
Okay. Any other questions, Kathy? If not, I guess we'll move on to General Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. We worked with staff on a number of permitting-related issues this month. I have had a lot of visits with Kathy and her staff on permitting and enforcement issues, working on the Water Development Board rules. And really firing up in some of our groundwater legislative committees, looking at a whole host of issues again for the upcoming legislative session, whether those will... Currently, the proposed legislation remains to be seen, but those committees and subcommittees are all starting to fire up. I don't really have anything else before we go into executive session, but I think, unless there's any questions.
Okay. At this time, at ten eighteen AM, the board will recess in the closing executive session under Section five five one point oh seven one, Government Code to Consult Legal Counsel on the items on today's agenda. No final action will be taken during the closed session. Board will reconvene after the session. Thank you. Okay, we will reconvene at eleven thirteen AM. Let's move on to item number eleven, showcasing for Orchard on the Brazos. We're setting up the district rule nine.
I'd like Brian to lay that out for us.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think we've got two folks here from Orchard on the Brazos today. Oscar Roan, who was the developer on that project, and Trey Strebe, who's the engineer. And who's doing the talking?
I love it.
Can you grab the microphone? We've had, I've been with some of the legal issues involved on this in the executive session with the board, but maybe you could just lay out to the board a little bit of the history of how you got to where we are today?
Sure, I appreciate it again. For the record, Trey Strebe with Baird Hampton and Brad Engineers. First of all, let me just say that the communication issues are completely on our side. Kathy and Brian have done a fantastic job of trying to help us. And through a series of events, you know, we just kind of dropped the ball, to be honest with you, on communicating with the board. So I just want to put that out there at the very beginning. There are three primary issues that have been identified. The first is the well registration. It's currently on the books as an agricultural exempt well. I'll address that. The second is the issue of past due payment for water that's been pumped from the well, including penalties and interest and various other things because of the late payments. And we'll get to that. And the third is our failure to submit the historical use application last December like it should have been. So let me just hit the well registration issue first. To be honest with you, I'm surprised that the project was ever logged as an agricultural or exempt well. In February and March of two thousand sixteen, we completed a water supply use agreement with Aqua Texas to build a public water supply system for the development of tall orchards on the Brazos that has sixty-one residential lots. We received TCEQ authorization to construct a public water supply well on September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Or the well was drilled in February of two thousand seventeen by Associated Well Services. The drillers report clearly labels that well as a public water supply well. Now, Associated did pull the permit for us. I don't know if they accidentally checked the wrong box, but our contract with them was for a public water supply well, which I'm sure, as you guys all know, was quite a bit more expensive than an agricultural or exempt or private well. So we have submitted an application to change the registration status that well from agricultural to public water supply. I just have to believe that that was some kind of paperwork error that should have been corrected quite a long time ago. The well has been metered since inception. Based on our conversation last week, the total, total amount only in past due amounts is six thousand seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents?
Eight cents.
Eight cents.
Eight cents, I think it was an eight of them. And Kathy, you have that check in your hand?
Yes, sir.
At this moment, I believe. And, and so the third thing is our plea, to be honest with you, to accept a very late application for historical use designation. The project, let me kind of circle back on one other issue that's kind of popped up is this whole why? Why was this well built on two point one acres in Somerville County? When the project is a hundred ninety acres, that's a hundred eighty-eight of which is in Upper Trinity District in Hood County? And, you know, in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when this was being built, the rules were probably a little bit different. But in order to keep our, it had nothing to do with, I can promise you, it had nothing to do with money. It had nothing to do with the fact that Prairielands is a little bit cheaper per chance than Upper Trinity. It was more about the fact that from a legislative plat approval perspective, keeping the project, the platted piece of property entirely within Hood County meant that we didn't have a multi-jurisdictional plat that was being approved by both the Hood County Commissioners Court and the Parker County Commissioners Court. So we had this two point one acres that was in Somerville County that for our purposes was somewhat undevelopable within the platted subdivision. Darryl in Aqua Texas, to be honest with you, likes working with Prairielands, preferred that the well be built in the Prairielands District, wanted to have the well permitted in Prairielands District. From Oscar's and our perspective, this is his well, Aqua Texas's well, Aqua Texas's system. So we went through and got it permitted through Prairielands. Certainly didn't mean to mislead anybody who was, at the time, I believe it was a pretty valid place to build a well, the, the cost of the well with the transfer fees were, you know, probably pretty close to what was in line with Upper Trinity. But it is a ninety-five gallon permitted well. It's built, it's functional. The project has been through so much difficulty. After we started construction and... After we started construction and neighboring property, and we filed suit against the project and put the whole thing into an injunction, that had to clear the whole lower court system. When he lost that battle, he then went through and filed an appeal, and it had to clear the entire upper court system. So we've won every court case. And to be honest with you, we're just in the process of getting quite a few bits of paperwork called up. You guys and the TCEQ in getting this thing fully transferred to Aqua Texas are all ongoing at this moment. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Oscar's here to answer any questions that you have. And again, we just would very respectfully ask that you consider the, the payment that we tried to make, the application to amend the well registration, and the application for the historic use designation.
I have a question. Just to sign out, did your son pass?
No, ma'am. He failed his driver's test this morning.
Oh, I am so sorry I asked.
So, yeah, Kathy was nice enough to move this bottom of the agenda. My sixteen-year-old turned sixteen yesterday, and we've had an appointment with DPS for six months for his driver's test. And apparently, he tried to make a left turn, like a left turn hour, and he moved into the opposing traffic. And they failed him. So he's very disappointed. I have a very disappointed sixteen-year-old on my hand right now.
Let's leave that out of the meeting.
I am so sorry I asked. I thought it'd be good news.
It's not.
Okay. There's no other question, Mr. President? Based on our discussion on this matter, I think it would be proper for the board to entertain a motion authorizing, based on the unique circumstances involved with this well, including it being registered and drilled prior to the deadlines for historic use permit under Rule three point eight, and having even obtained TCEQ approval prior to the adoption of our rules of extending the deadline for Orchard on the Brazos to file a historic use permit application until, say, October fifteenth. Make sure we've got administratively complete application. And settling out all violations related to the wells, all violations of the district's rules relating to this well for a grand total of penalties and fees of six thousand seventy-seven dollars and eight cents.
Okay. I have a question. Does Kathy, the, the check that you have, does that include the extra fees for transfer?
Yes, the amounts provided today do include transport fees outside of the district. One outstanding issue on, need to receive its application fees for the historic use permit and the amendment.
We do owe you two hundred and fifty dollars.
Plus another hundred on the amendment of the registration.
You'll have a check.
Okay.
Yeah, that's separate and apart from...
That didn't need to be part of the motion?
No, they, I mean, in order for them to file the application, they'll have to pay the two hundred and fifty dollar thing. And to file the amendment, they'll have to pay the hundred dollar fee for that. But this is just for the settlement of all outstanding rules violations. Would be the six thousand seventy-seven dollars and eight cents.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approved the application or the fee. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And an extension. That was the board.
Yes.
We'll make sure it's in there.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number twelve. Article four, is there any new business for future meetings in general? Anybody has at this time?
We're looking to deal for Dennis.
Yes.
And you guys will decide when and where and how and...
You have to... Yes, on the next one.
It's also on the rules, and by law, make the rule thing.
We'll be trying to have a rules in by law too, maybe.
You're going to send us some prospective dates?
Yes, sir. And budget meetings.
I was just getting ready to say you did add one more to that. Oh, boy.
I was going to try to take a few days off somewhere in there.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain item number thirteen.
I make a motion to the adjournment.
Motion made and seconded, adjournments be for the water conservation district. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed? Motion cleared. We are now adjourned at eleven twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can mail it to me.
The check?
I'll just write you.
Okay.
Because you have the applications.
Yes, I have them. It just, each one had a fee attached to it.
Do you need two checks?
One at the time.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There'll be a total of three fifty.